Almost, I always set these to stone. Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I am Mayor Mark Landman, and I'd like to welcome everybody in the audience, as well as everybody watching us online, as we called order this joint meeting of the Cattati City Council and a successor agency to the former Cattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, February 27th. I'd like to next introduce the council who's here with me tonight. And I am joined on the dais to my left by Vice Mayor John Delasso, Councilmember Susan Harvey, Councilmembers Wendy Skilman and Councilmember John Moore. And our staff is here with us tonight, and we are led by our city manager Damian Ovid, City Attorney Robin Donian, Police Chief Michael Parrish, Administrative Services Director Norm Veloso. And with that, I think I'm going to ask our deputy city clerk Lauren Burgess. See, I'm going to work your introduction right into going to our roll call, please.
Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Mayor Landman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Delasso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Thank you. And with that, next, we're going to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask Isabel Resena, our Sonoma State University representative, if you'd be so kind as to lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are next to action item four, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving and reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. I'm going to start by asking the council if we have any corrections? Nope. Any opposition to passing as written? No? So you're not going to look at the audience, see if anybody wants to comment, as this is an action item?
What was it, sir?
This is resolution, the minutes, waiving of the minutes? Very good. With that, minutes or waive, that is unanimous. Let's see, next, we are to announcements. I'm going to begin with our meeting orientation for new attendees and new viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may, or may not, choose to respond to comments as government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Next, the city of Cattati has special open office hours, Monday evenings, from five to seven by appointment, at the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Cattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Cattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Roanoke Park Cattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit them at www.sonoma library dot org. The Cattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month, from five to seven p.m., Saturdays from one to four p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call them directly at (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Cattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, and that is N-I-X-L-E dot com. And lastly, the city does offer a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at cattatycity.org. Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Totally out of context here, but I have a question on item four. I don't know if I was sleeping, or if I missed something, but we had the waiving of reading, but we never did take a motion on the minutes?
No, I asked, I've noticed in a lot of places what they do is they just ask if anybody has any opposition, if they have any corrections?
Right.
And if they have any opposition to passing as written. And if nobody has any opposition, that essentially counts as being passed unanimously. In theory, it saves a little time, although tonight it certainly didn't.
No, no, that's fine.
But that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch, though. I appreciate somebody keeping an eye on things. I remember last meeting, you guys bailed me out a few times, so I appreciate it. So we're to presentations, and we do have an update by our Sonoma State Student Body Representative Isabel Resena. Welcome back, Isabel.
So, right now, on Saturday, we have our Spring Fling, which is kind of like our spring rally. We have a concert in, on campus, and we have a bunch of different activities that are being put on by student involvement. Then the following Saturday, we have our, it's one day, it's like our, I can't remember the name, but it's our service day, and so people, students can sign up to be a part of teams, and then they're assigned a different location to do a part of a community service, and that'll be next Saturday, March 11th, so next, next Saturday. And then, as Senate, Associate Student Senate, we are currently tackling on three issues this semester. We are working on advocating for, to not have a tuition increase, which is proposed by the CSU Board of Trustees. We are working on advising throughout the campus, and then also housing, trying to figure that out. And those are the three things we're working on through Senate. Then, this past weekend, we actually had our annual Lip Jam, which was put on by one of our sororities on campus, and it was a huge success and a lot of fun.
Very good, thank you, Isabel. I'm going to look and see if the council has any questions for you? Anyone, tonight? No, very good. Well, I'm going to wish you luck with that, and I'm going to wish you good luck with the tuition thing.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for being here. And we're to item seven now, which is approval of the final agenda. And I'll look to the city manager and see if we have any changes to the final agenda?
No changes.
Very good, thank you. And this brings us to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. So I do have something to read first before I open up the floor. Excuse me. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017 dash 02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time, where disability accommodation has been requested. I have no cards before me tonight, so I'm going to open, see if anybody wants to speak. Ms. Alderman, welcome.
First, I'd like to speak about the announcements. Number A, I do not know why that is here. Obviously, we have me and George as the only citizens in the audience this one, and we definitely know it, and then we hear it again when we come up for citizens' business and the consent calendar. And also, on number A, you don't mention that there's the consent time, too, that it's consecutive. And if you're going to put it in there, you need to put that the consent calendar and the citizens' business need to be together. This agenda this week is nothing. It's like, there are so many issues in this city, and these are nothing to do with what people care about. That's why you're not filling this chamber. Nobody cares about these little things. They care about the homeless, fire prevention, they care about preparedness, they care about a whole lot of issues, but not these that are only busy work for you guys. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, I've been looking, when I've gone back to the webcasts, there, these guys are making faces on camera to us, so I request that they be put back on the wall, because it is very unprofessional for the staff to be making faces at us. Okay, I'm done with, I'm going to consent calendar.
Hang on just a second, we'll restart your clock here. I want to make sure we get all your time.
Got it. It won't be that long. I do not approve of B, the Cattati Chamber of Commerce event, because it includes a fee waiver. You guys already give them $15,000 a year out of the city council contributions. It is not fair to give them more and waive their fees for the costs, like hanging up the sign and everything. That is not appropriate. They are, they should be under contract to provide these services. They shouldn't be getting contributions. They should have, there is a lot legally wrong, and to give them even more is disgusting, in my view. Thank you.
And thank you. And I'll look to the audience and see, Mr. Barich, would you like to speak tonight?
Counsel, I don't understand why these opening remarks for citizens' business are needed. After 50 years, this town did fine without all this legal gobbledygook, and you should make clear that the three minutes allowed for the public to speak is the state minimum allowed by law, to make sure no council members go to jail over disallowing us to speak any less than three minutes. The standard time to speak before the city council for decades was five minutes. So, for the benefit of the audience and the people at home watching tonight, my name is George Barich, I'm a former city councilman here. I served with honor and distinction. And, Mayor, you promised some time ago to refer to me as Councilman Barich, or words to that effect. Now, I don't know if you're lying, I'm not sure if, you know, it's just standard practice for Cattati to be a double-talking politician, but you did promise to refer to me as Councilman Barich. I served with honor and distinction. Now, I think you need to do some soul-searching on how you're going to reconcile your public statement, that indeed you were going to do that, from here on out. And I'd also think that, at times like this, you should be introducing other very respectable and distinguished people here at these meetings, such as Lori Alderman, who's part of the unofficial City Council Oversight Committee, who's done a wonderful job the last couple of years, keeping track of the budget, offering constructive criticism, and who's taken a lot of grief and personal insults towards her. You should also be introducing members of the press who are here. Catherine's here tonight with the community voice. You should always, you should be introducing them as well. As you can see, we have a dismal turnout here tonight. It's shocking how few people are here, with nice weather, given how politically active many citizens were in this town for many years. I think now they're just too embarrassed to show up. They don't trust you people. With all the people that you know, and how you have advocated public participation in the system, you don't, you're not able to get a turnout here. You're not adding anything to the agenda. It's dismal. And also, I agree with Lori, city staff has been moved up here for one purpose and one purpose only. Whenever the citizens constructively criticize the city council, staff is making faces, and I think they should be relegated to the side of the wall with Chief Parrish. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Barich, would you like to speak on consent tonight?
On item B, I agree with Lori Alderman. I think that since the city is basically shaking down businesses like Mercy Wellness for $30,000 a year, and basically just washing that money through City Hall and giving it to organizations like the Chamber of Commerce, that they should pay their fair share for the use of city facilities. We had workshops where we, the city council and the community decided it was high time that we raised fees and stopped waiving fees for the use of city property and city services, because it was the right thing to do. Now, it's become an insult to pass council members, who passed that policy, that they wanted to see organizations pay their fair share for what the city and the taxpayers are putting out. These constant, giving free pass to these organizations is just plain wrong. It sets a wrong tone for going forward. It makes it look like city services and city property don't cost money, and I think it's really become evident to me that this is all about political favors now. You're giving favors to the Chamber of Commerce, you're giving them free treatment in this case, you give them all this extra money for one thing and one thing only, so they never come forward and constructively criticize the city. This is hush money, and I've talked to Chamber members about this, and some of them are pretty upset. They don't like the fact that they've taken money, because they feel that they cannot come up here and be honest before their city government, because they're so dependent on the money that you, that you hand out to them. If we want a vibrant Chamber of Commerce, you need to cut off the money chain and let them come forward and explain to you what a dismal job you've really done for the commerce of this town over the years.
And thank you, Mr. Barich. I'm going to look out one more time, and see if anybody else wishes to speak, and seeing nothing, I will close public comment. And bring us back to consent calendar, we have items A through C. Unless one of my councilmen wishes to pull an item, I'll be looking for a motion.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, that carries seven zero.
And I'm going to ask the council if we have any direction on future agenda items that you want to share tonight? Tonight, Mr. Vice Mayor?
We've spoken about this in the past, I just wanted to bring it up again. When we were looking at the safe parking program through Catholic Charities, before that came to us as an option, we had, you know, some discussion, albeit brief, about the possibility of using any of these facilities for homeless people in seriously inclement weather. And I kind of remember the biggest problem with most of those rooms was that we never really knew when they were going to be utilized, and so we couldn't really make them available on a nightly basis. And of course, we can't predict the weather too far out, so. And I kind of remember that the last census numbers, which is a moment in time, I get it, wasn't the number for Cattati, for homeless people, like a single-digit? Was it not a small, like, number, like, three or four?
It what?
Okay, double-digit.
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
It's usually around that, that, or in that ballpark.
So, I guess, what I'm just putting out there to staff is, you know, there's never the right time to do it, it's just move forward with it. If, you know, are there any facilities that we could potentially make available? A lot of times, I think cities will make some facilities available almost the day before the evening comes, that's going to be a very wet night, or a very cold night, or something. And, you know, would we have, I mean, we have no, I get, there's a lot of logistics involved. I won't even go into the details there, but I guess I'd be happy to sit with you and talk more about it, but I'm just wondering, and I don't know what the consensus of council would be, you know, do we want to potentially have some, even if it's just a city manager report, come back to us about, you know, are there really any options available for those nights where the weather's really horrific? So, that's what I thought I'd put out there.
Very good. Anybody else have anything they want to bring forward tonight? Checking one more time. With that, that takes us to the regular agenda. And our first is, A, a presentation of the fiscal year 2017-18 budget awards. And I believe we're going to have an interesting presentation by Norm Veloso, our Director of Administrative Services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and I'm the council. Norm Veloso.
Director of Admin Services. Tonight, I wanted to present to you a presentation of the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget awards that we receive from the Government Finance Officers Association and the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers for Excellence in Budgeting. On behalf of the city and the admin services, I am deeply honored to receive the city's first-ever budget awards from both the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers and the Government Finance Officers Association. The award represents a significant achievement by the city and reflects the commitment of the city council, city manager, and the staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, Cattati satisfied nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Considering that we are a small city with limited resources, our current budget process demonstrates our commitment to meeting and exceeding standards being met in even larger cities. Recipients of this budget awards have their budget evaluated by three reviewers over 27 specific criteria, which are grouped in four categories. Overall, budgets must be rated as proficient or outstanding by two or three reviewers in four categories, and I'm happy to say that out of the three reviewers, independent, professional, experienced reviewers in municipal budgeting, we received three proficient ratings. I'm happy to also say that this is a rare award for the city, and it's only given to a few nationwide. And just imagine this, if you look at California, there are 482 cities in California, 58 counties in California, there's about 2,861 special districts all over California, and only about under 4% receive this award in California. Think about this in a bigger perspective of not just California, but 50 states, not just in the United States, but also in Canada. So to receive, the Government Finance Officers Association reflects so much of the desire by the city to achieve excellence in budget reporting.
Thanks, Norm. Just real quickly, I wanted just to add, you know, the thanks to the city council, because without the council's support, this wouldn't have been possible, and of course, thank you to Norm and his team at Admin Services, pulling it all together and getting his awards. It really is a big deal for the city, so I'm just happy to be here tonight, next to Norm, to talk a little bit about it.
Well, as you may suspect, I have some comments along those lines I'd like to offer, too. But first, before we get to that, I want to see if we have any questions for staff before we open to public comment. Any questions? I do have one after you, Mr. Delasso.
Thank you kindly. I may have two.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry. The, Norm?
Yes.
Great job. The Government Finance Officers Association is not a local group. I assume it's either from Washington DC or somewhere east of here?
Correct. Yes.
Is it from DC?
Chicago. It's in Chicago. It's actually covering both the United States and Canada.
Excellent, okay. And then, the California Municipal Finance, is that like a Sacramento office as well?
It is a Sacramento office.
Yeah, okay. I was just, I was pretty convinced neither of these were local, looking at the addresses when they came in, but, yeah, and I think this is, you know, this is one of those things where comparing these awards for Cattati and listing, you know, who else may be in California, if there were any others, I think is a great thing, so kudos to you and your staff, I mean, the entire staff, for working on this and getting such a great report back. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, I understand this is pretty rare. Over the years, how many of our colleagues in the county are we aware of might have received one of these awards? Has anybody received both at the same time?
So I'll go first, and he can kick me under the table if I mistake this, but, so for the GFOA award, I am aware of two entities that have got, actually, there's a third that got at least one award in the recent past, but basically two others in Sonoma County. And they're big cities, Santa Rosa and the county of Sonoma. And then, for CSFMO, I don't know of any in Sonoma County, but.
That's correct.
Well, those are two rather large entities with a lot of resources, so. Well, more comments in about a minute, but if nothing further here, I'm going to open it to public comment. Ms. Alderman, as usual, you were first up.
I would like to say that I'm probably one of the few citizens who look at the budgets and everything over the years, and there has been a great improvement since Norm came, and it does really reflect the policies and all that, and the presentation is wonderful, and that's part of what the award is for, and I'm doing that. There's still the problems that it's not an honest, they didn't go deep into what you guys are doing. They're looking for policies, they're not looking if you're spending enough for streets or anything like that. That's the only thing, comment I wanted to make on that, but congratulations, Norm, that was a very good honor for you.
Thank you, Ms. Alderman. Mr. Barich, did you want to speak tonight?
Yes, this award does not reflect the general health of this city, the lack of tourism, the amount of businesses that are leaving, the amount of residents that we're losing. It doesn't have anything to do with the general health, it's looking at a numbers game. And the fact is, none of these people have ever, gave out the award, have ever been to Cattati. They don't know how much revenue we've lost with the added additional sales taxes over the years. We know if you want less of something, you want less business, and just raise taxes. They don't, these numbers don't reflect the fact that the budget is dishonest in the fact that it does not, it overestimates the anticipated revenues that are going to come into Cattati. That's been, that's been a problem for Cattati for many years, overestimating and inflating projected revenues, and the budget does not show the real hardcore city expenses that the city is going to face going into the future. As Lori pointed out, the roads, our lack of police officers, our last, lack of proper investigations, the amount of lawsuits the city is going to be faced with, with when we have city attorneys like this and her law firm, it does, these numbers, the budget doesn't show this. Budgets are useful. City managers are often just subjected to dealing with what he or she has on its plate, given the fact of the city council that he and she is working with. The budget's dishonest, there's been a lack of leadership. Cattati has suffered so great over the years from these socialist policies, these applauding sanctuary cities, so much more. Railroading opposition off the city council, the people that you disagree with, the need for consensus on the council at all times. This has been a real blow to people in this community who love a representative democracy, who love a healthy government where there's some give and take, and there's compromise. They hate the Soviet-style government that they see on this city council. Yeah, watch the clock, everybody. I want the public to know, the whole council's watching the clock. Very important. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Barich. All right, I'm going to bring it back to see if any of my colleagues have any comments. Councilmember Harvey, please lead off.
I'd just like to thank you and your team, Norm. As was pointed out, we have come a long way with the presentation of our budget. I, too, have been looking at the city's budget for I too have been looking at the city's budget for many, many years, have made many years of comments, as Damian will attest to. And this is really a fine representation. And I think you and your team have done a great job, and thank you for bringing this to our city.
Looking over to the side, anybody have a comment? Please.
So I'm one of those people that look at too many numbers and my eyes start to spin, which is why we went to law school and did not become an accountant. So I do very much appreciate the ease with which I can look at a budget and understand things that you have the overview and then you can get more in-depth further in. So I really appreciate all the work that you and your team have done to make it easier for non-numerical people like me to understand what's going on in the, in the local budget. And to have people who do this for a living, and this is all they do, for them to sit down and say, "Cattotti's doing a great job." I think that's really fantastic and wonderful, and congratulations.
Councilmember Moore.
I think it's a great, a great accolade, very nice to get the kudos for the amount of work that's put in. I think it shows what a dedicated staff we have and how professional you guys are. And it's really nice to be recognized in a positive arena. Very nice job.
Yeah, I definitely want to make a comment here. I want to point out, this is two, not one awards, but two. Both the Government Finance Officers Association as well as the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. That's significant. My staff's being shy about this because we certainly don't want to embarrass any of our neighbors. But to best of my knowledge, what I can find, no one else in Sonoma County has been able to achieve this to the best of my knowledge. So I'm very impressed. I'd like to read a little something from the letter from the Government Finance Officers Association. Unpack it, page 39, and it's simple sentences, two sentences say this. "This award is the highest form of recognition in government budgeting. Its attainment represents a significant achievement by your organization." And I just wanted to say, this sums my feelings up perfectly. I'm going to congratulate Mr. Veloso as well as his hard-working staff for the excellence that you've brought to this city. I see that every day from you, I see that every day from your colleagues in the city, so thank all of you. But tonight in particular, thank you for this, very well done. So congratulations. And I believe we have some awards. I think it might be time to have you step up here with your awards since we've put you in the embarrassing position of presenting something where you're getting an award.
Thank you to the city council and the city. Got these two awards that we received.
And let's step down here. Don't get any more of these. And this brings us to item 11B on our regular agenda. And this is a presentation on revenue and taxation in Sonoma County. And I believe, Mr. Obed, you're going to be taking us through this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So earlier in the week, when I was, earlier in the week, it's only Tuesday, but I guess that would be yesterday, when I was talking with the department heads, they were, they were very clear that I shouldn't, that I should keep it concise because I have a tendency to get into the weeds of this kind of stuff because it's super interesting to me. So I'll try to keep it at a higher level and then we'll get into some of the local, Sonoma County taxation structures. And if I can just, you know, beg everyone's forbearance for a minute, I'm going to go over just some statewide tax structure stuff and then I'll get into the local stuff. Maybe slightly more than one minute, but not much more. All right, so this is sort of an underlying thing that affects everything that happens in California. So this is, so roughly about half the states in the, in the United States have some form of citizen initiative or referendum process. California was, I think, 10th, the 10th state in the nation to, to adopt this process in around 1910, so early in the last century. And the blue states, so initiatives and statutes, initiated statutes and amendments. Well, basically what that means is that people can take, voters can take initiatives to ballot for a vote. And amendments mean amendments to the constitution. So the blue states are, you know, like citizen-driven statutes that are created as well as amendments to the state's constitution. The green ones are statutes only, so they can put statutes forward, but they can't amend those states' constitutions. Yellow is referendum only, which basically means that if the legislature does something that the voters don't like, they can put a referendum on the ballot. And the red states are amendments to those constitutions, the state constitutions only. And then, of course, the gray states are neither, right? So everything's done by the elected representative and that system, state government. So it's roughly half that do that and the other half have some form of initiative or referendum. And so just a little bit about a couple of major tax, taxes in the state of California. It was, sales tax was established in California back in 1933, and it was set up as a tax on the transfer of goods. So that was the, that was the primary source of economic activity back in 1933, people selling things to each other. And over time, it's evolved. So sales tax used to be administered locally within the counties back after 1933. In 1962, it switched to a statewide administration of sales tax by the board, the BOE, as Board of Equalization. And slightly before that, in 1955, there was this thing called the Bradley Burns Uniform Tax Law, which statewide basically said that local jurisdictions get 1% of, 1% share of local sales tax. And, and then it all gets administered centrally by the state. And it took several years to get it in place, but by 1962, that was all in place statewide. And in addition to the fact that sales tax is a tax on, you know, tangible goods, there's also, since 1933, been a lot of exemptions and exclusions that have happened to the sales tax. And we've talked a little bit about this before, but basically what that means is a couple of things. Is since 1933, the economic activity, not only in California but in the nation, have gradually switched from primarily based on sales of goods to primarily service-based. So, you know, providing services, massages or auto, you know, mechanics and, and just, there's a lot of our economy, you know, accountants, and there's a variety of things that we do now, much more than we did in 1933, that, that makes up a lot of the, the economic activity in the state. And the exemptions and exclusions that just narrowed, over time has narrowed what the sales tax applies to, right? So certain things are no longer taxable because they were either exempted or excluded somewhere along the way. And, you know, the net effect is that the overall economic activity remains only on the transfer of goods, which as a percentage of the economy has shrunk. And then the exemptions and exclusions have created kind of a narrower tax base. So you tax less things and over time, the tax, sales tax rate statewide has gone up because the scope of the tax is reduced. So, you know, there's been, there's been many studies on modernizing California's sales tax structure. For example, just, just to give an easy example, just because I'm familiar with Texas, which is where some of my family is from. I go there a lot, and so their sales taxes, they have a sales tax as well, but their sales tax is goods and services. It's not just goods like California's sales tax. So when you go to, like, say Houston, you'll see like an 8% sales tax, but it applies to everything, right? It applies to goods, it applies to services, it applies across the board to almost everything. And I've seen some estimates that if California's sales tax took on like a Texas model, the sales tax would be statewide, it would, to achieve the same revenue result, would be about 4%. So anyway, who knows if that'll ever happen, but there's always talk about modernizing California's sales tax. And then property tax, so the state started taxing property back in 1850, which I think was right about when they became a state and the union. But anyway, it was originally a statewide property tax. And then in 1910, they switched it to, to be assessed by local jurisdictions. So the counties, right, became, became the assessor of property tax. And it eventually included things like vehicle license taxes, vehicle registration taxes, and that was all included in property tax. And then after 1910, the state, because they weren't relying on property tax anymore, property tax became a local tax through a restructuring plan they did back around 1910. The state became reliant on sales tax, income tax, and other excise-type taxes. And then, so this is like the, and so I have to, full disclosure, I pilfered this from the League of California Cities. I think it's an interesting slide, there's a couple like, like this. But Proposition 13, which everyone's familiar with, was the so-called tax revolt, which was driven primarily by, I think the poster child for that was fixed-income people, primarily in coastal communities in California, where property values were going up rapidly in the 70s. And people were being taxed, people on fixed income in particular, were being taxed out of their, out of their houses. And, and there was a lot of other circumstances at the time that led to this. But, but basically, Prop 13, because we're initiative state, right, it gets on the ballot, it gets approved by the voters, and it does a couple of things, it does many things. One is it, it caps property tax rates at 1% of the market value. The market values for the properties at that time were set to the values in 1975 and '76. So it also assessed the growth at 2% of the property value or CPI. And you only can reassess to full market value when the property changes ownership. So this is, that was a way of, of controlling property taxes. And then it also called out what it, what it defined as special taxes that would require a 2/3 voter approval. And, and the, and this, this thing that circled in red is a, was kind of, was, was not, it wasn't viewed as being a big deal at the time, but it subsequently became kind of a big deal, is that the authority for allocating property tax revenues were transferred to the state. So as you recall, back in 1910, the state, through some restructuring, switched property tax to local, being a local tax, and it relied on other types of taxes. Prop 13 gave the state authority to allocate revenue this way, through, even though it was local taxes controlled by the state now. And so an interesting, well, actually, let me go to the next slide and I'll tell you the interesting point. So Prop 13 in 1978, this was, I mean, this is why it was such a big deal at the time. It was a, it basically slashed, so city, county, special district, schools, local schools, right? It slashed the revenue from property taxes by over half, basically overnight. So it was, it was kind of, at the time, it was kind of cataclysmic in terms of how these organizations were going to try to figure out how to operate. And one of the things that, so like property tax, at the, prior to Prop 13, how it, how it worked is there'd be a revenue requirement that would be determined at the local level. So whether it's a city or the county or a school district or whatever, they would figure out the revenue requirement for the next year, and the local governing body would, by majority vote, would set that tax rate, right, for that subsequent year. And this is, this is actually how it's done in, I believe, most other states. I mean, that's how, that's, a lot of states still do it. But in California, we don't do it anymore that way. This is, now we, now it's all voter-initiated approvals. But this set off a chain of, and I don't expect you to read all this, but this set off a chain of things that, it's kind of the littered road of various initiatives, which I won't, I won't bore you with all the details in all these. But basically what happens is Prop 13, you know, slashes the revenues for local taxes and shifts the ability to the state to allocate taxes. And then, and then the states, you know, so the, so the local governments are in budget crisis after this, and then the state tries to help them out. And then the state gets in a budget crisis and they try to steal money from the local governments, and it goes back and forth like this for many years, right? And so there's a, there's a whole variety of citizen initiatives that go back and forth. So the state enacts something, then the citizen initiative tries to counteract that. And anyway, it goes on and on, which I'll spare you, like I said, on this one. But this is just an example, this is immediately after Prop 13. The state, through their tax, their property tax control authority, shifted more property tax to the cities and counties and special districts and, and used some state general fund money to augment school budgets at that time, right? So this is kind of the part of the shift. And this is what ironically, it, this leads to another shift later, which is called ERAF, which again goes the other way now. The state takes money from local jurisdictions to fund schools to reduce the state's general fund support of schools. And then I think you know that the voters, you know, subsequently adopted a bunch of initiative, a series of initiatives to protect school funding statewide, and then to protect local revenue statewide to some degree. And to try to, to try to control this and, you know, kind of keep, kind of keep things, kind of keep revenue where it is. But, you know, as a consequence, it just made the, sort of the funding picture much more complicated than it ever was. So Prop, prior to Prop 13, it was pretty simple how things got funded. After Prop 13, it created a bunch of scenarios, like you saw that road of citizen initiatives, that just made everything a lot more complicated. And then ironically, for the average person who looks at that, it makes it almost, doesn't make it easily understandable. And then so it makes people further irritated that they can't understand how things are get funded just because of this chain of events that were set off. Anyway, so this, this kind of stuff goes on and on. And then this is, I just, was mentioned, local revenue protection. There's a series of propositions that happened just from state raids of local money that the citizens passed. And I won't go through it all, but basically it was trying to protect local services as much as, you know, people could. And then, so with that very quick overview, some of the context. This is, so this is just where we are today, and this is, when I say local taxes, I mean Sonoma, Sonoma County. So how, how I got here was I just looked at all the different cities in Sonoma County. And this was driven by a council request, just to, you know, what's going on in the county in terms of local taxes. And I'll just run through some of the big ones first. This is, so this is a transaction and use tax. And this, of course, you're familiar with, this is Measure G. Cattotti is at 1%, and then most other cities are at half percent, Sebastopol's at 3/4%. And then there's another common thing called the utility users tax. So Cloverdale has a 3% tax, Santa Rosa has a 5% tax, Sebastopol has a 3.75% tax. And if you're not familiar with what this is, basically what this is, is the local jurisdiction would put a tax on the utilities themselves. So as an, as an end user, as a resident, what you get is you get your PG&E bill, or you get your water bill, or you get your telephone bill, or whatever this applies to. In most cases, it applies to water, sewer, cable, gas, electric, telephone. That's the typical kind of suite of utilities that it applies to. And these taxes are applied. And these taxes are applied directly on that bill, and that utility collects that revenue from the resident, and then remits it back to the cities. And then, there's transit occupancy taxes. We do have a, a voter-approved 10% TOT, otherwise TOT tax, this is a, a tax on hotel stays. So, anyway, it looks good on paper, but of course we don't have, we have like basically zero revenue, because we don't have any hotels in Cattati. We, as was mentioned in a previous meeting, we have the distinction of it being the only city, or even the county, in Sonoma County with no, essentially no TOT revenue. Everyone else has it, and it's usually a fairly significant source of revenue for these other cities. So, just to tell you what these columns mean, the base rate is the locally adopted TOT. It ranges from a low of nine percent in Santa Rosa to a high of 14 percent in Healdsburg. And then these BIAs, they're business improvement areas. So some, some cities also have a local BIA, and what they typically use that for is they use it to fund tourism promotions, right? So, Healdsburg, Santa Rosa, and the town of Sonoma have local BIAs. And there's also a county-wide BIA, which goes to Sonoma County Tourism, which is that organization that promotes tourism in Sonoma County. So if, all the cities basically belong to that, with the exception of Healdsburg and the town of Sonoma, which opted out for, for some reason. But, if the, basically how it works is if the TOT revenues exceed $350,000 a year, then it starts kicking in, and that two percent goes to Sonoma County Tourism to support tourism promotion in the county. So again, we have the two percent in theory, but it's never applied to us, because we don't have that. Everyone else pays it, though. So, we get to hang out in those Sonoma County Tourism meetings for free. And then, and those, those were just some, you know, some common voter-initiated taxes that everyone knows, I think most people know about. This is, this is a list of taxes that, taxes, fees, or assessments that are common in Sonoma County, in most cases are common. So transaction and use tax, we talked about, business license taxes, it's usually not a very significant source of revenue, for us, it's not a significant source of revenue, some other cities it can be more significant, but that's common. An ad valorem property tax, there is an example in Sonoma County of a ad valorem property tax that pays city retirement costs, obviously not, doesn't apply here in Cattati. Transit occupancy taxes, it's a hotel tax that we just talked about. Melrose assessments, these are community facility districts that support services in certain predefined district areas. But, the reason why it's relevant here is that it, it's, to provide that level of service in those defined district areas, it doesn't require general fund support, so it's essentially assisting the general fund in a way. Utility user taxes, we don't have that here, but several, as you saw, those several cities do have it. Documentary transfer tax, this is a tax on real estate, real estate transfers, when someone buys or sells property. It's just in the closing, in the title statement when you close. It's a relatively minor source in Cattati, but it can be made larger sources in some other cities. Cannabis, cannabis business license tax, that, that's, in a few cities, Cattati has this one, but it's yet to be determined, because we're so early in it, if that's going to be, what that's going to amount to, in terms of tax. And that applies only to cannabis businesses. And then franchise fees, so it's fairly common to have, so, so let me back up a second, so cities can do, cities are able to do a variety of services that they, you know, that can include garbage collection, it can include providing electricity to residents, it can include, you know, power, so gas, too. But cities, for, for obvious reasons, generally don't get into those businesses, so they, they franchise that business to a private operator. And franchise fees are, fees assessed on, generally on private operators. So what's common is franchise fees for garbage collection, franchise fees for cable, franchise fees for electricity, franchise fees for gas, gas and electricity, franchise fees for telecommunication, those are fairly common. There are examples in Sonoma County where there are actually, essentially franchise fees on city utilities as well, so they charge their own utilities, because they're separate legal entities, franchise fees. That doesn't apply in Cattati, but they apply, they charge them franchise fees, and those franchise fees go back to the general fund. Refuse road impact fee, that's just a fee to offset some of the impact that the heavy garbage trucks create on our residential streets, because they're by far the heaviest vehicles that go, that go on the streets, and lead to premature wear and tear of the streets. So that's a fairly common thing, Cattati does have that. There's something called a trench cut fee in, in some cities, which is basically if you cut a trench, then you're paying a separate fee for that, besides encroachment fees. Some cities have casino funding, and I think you can think of an example, significant casino funding, like millions and millions of dollars of casino funding. And then landscape and lighting assessment districts, these are benefit assessment districts, which pay for, as it would imply, lighting and landscape assessments, or lighting and landscape districts, to, to maintain lighting and landscape. So this, again, would, it, it does, in, in the defined areas that are established for these, it does allow, it does give some relief to the general fund, because they don't have to maintain the lighting and landscape in those areas, because the residents in those areas do. And that's, that's pretty common in the county, Cattati does do that as well. So of this list, I mean, we, we do some of them, but, you know, there's, there's many other types of, types of taxes, fees, and assessments that we don't do. And that's, and that's one of the reasons why I think it's been said many times here, you can't really easily do, you have to keep a lot of this stuff in mind, plus just the structures of the cities themselves, to be able to compare one city to another, because there's a lot of things that vary between even cities in the same county. And so, this is just an idea, just to give you guys a sense. So all those like sources of revenue, when you add them all up, in all these, in all the cities, all the small cities, so these, so Petaluma, the larger cities, Petaluma and Santa Rosa are a little bit different, they're harder to compare to the, the middle and midsize and smaller-sized cities. So, to get to these, to get to these numbers, basically what, what I did, and this is just a high-level look at it, is taking all of those sources of revenue that these cities get locally, basically within their cities, and roll it all up, and see how much that adds up to as a percentage of their general fund revenue. Because you can't compare dollar to dollar, because everyone has different-sized general funds, so as a percentage, the average across the county for all those cities I mentioned, basically everyone except for Petaluma and Santa Rosa, is, is about 42 percent. And if you look at Cattati, and you roll them all up, and this includes the one percent Measure G, it's about 39 percent. So, that just gives you a sense for that, you know, that we have, we, we don't have as many of those local, you know, taxes. So, as a consequence, we're, we are overall lower than, you know, the average of these other jurisdictions. And, I think, so with that, I think that was my, that was my final slide, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Turn my microphone back on first, and see if we have any questions from the council, looking to the side. Vice Mayor Delgado.
I'm on a roll tonight. I'm going back to the TOT, and I think this was kind of a hot-button issue not too long ago, but do you know, and I'm not talking about Cattati, I'm talking about countywide or beyond, do you know how Airbnb fits into this? Are they taxed? I, I just don't know.
And, so in, in jurisdictions that allow them, that allow Airbnbs to exist, then they do often set up the regulations to tax them, and get TOT from them.
And it would be considered TOT, that's kind of what I was curious, so, all right. That was, actually, that's all I have for right now.
Anybody over here? Very good. I'm going to open to public comments, see if anybody wants to comment. I don't even have to say go first, do I? I'm just going to say go with it.
First, I wanted to say stuff about Prop 13, just so you know. My family bought the house, our house, in 1972, and L-section was, which was called Holiday Park, was being built. So there's going to be a lot of people in L-section, and older families, and it's generational. When we, when my mother dies, we will, my brother and I will continue with the Prop 13 tax level. So we have a bunch of people probably in L-section, in our section, that are, the older families in our section, that, that's not going to be a great set, unless they totally get rid of their family connection, so, just so you know. Your reliance on sales tax, yes, that was compared, that last slide was comparing apples to oranges. Yes, you only have less, but your sales tax is 70 percent of your total revenues, which is much more than any other city. You have less revenue, but relying, I sent Damian a whole thing on this, relying on sales tax is not, is very, considered very risky, and especially with going to the online sales, like Amazon Prime will get me anything in two, two days. I hardly ever go in the stores anymore. And I looked it up, and, yes, she'll get the one percent, she won't get the other one percent unless, because we don't have an Amazon facility. In Sacramento, they have a Amazon facility, and if they're sent somewhere in Sacramento, they get their extra one percent, but, or whatever. But anyways, I want to explain that, because I didn't research that. The other, sorry, blanking. The, can I take a break for, and come back?
You've got some time left, compose yourself if you'd like, or come on back, and I'll give you 30 seconds after Mr. Berge's, does that sound good?
I had one more thought, but I, I lost.
Get that thought back. Mr. Berge, did you want to speak on this subject?
I'll speak briefly, and maybe, maybe Laurie can come up and use up some of my time. I'll be brief. The one statement that Damian made in his walk down memory lane with California taxes, when it comes to the legislative, legislative branch, passing more and more taxes, and citizens' groups, and taxpayers' groups, and initiatives, going back and trying to reverse those taxes, is pretty much standard fare for the way the world works. There are people in California, and many other states, and other countries, who believe that a good tax rate for, for Californians, for instance, is probably 90 percent. They would like nothing more than us paying 90 percent of our income in taxes, and the state controlling more of what we do, and what we say, and what we read, and everything else. And the backlash by these tax organizations to try to turn the tide on this is, it's just quite normal. And, at the end of the day, we find a balance, is what we find. And, I, I think it's fair to say that, you know, government has its role, and has its goal, in trying to grow. And there's not a tax dollar they never, never, didn't appreciate seeing in the coffers. And, nothing's going to change that way. I don't, never heard, this city council, or anyone from our state legislature in recent memory, ever talking about personal liberties, and protecting our rights, and protecting our wealth, our personal wealth, and our ability to grow our own wealth. It's always a matter of wanting to take our wealth and use it for their benefit, in the end, for our good. It's about taking away our rights. Quite understandable, and let me yield to Laurie.
No, Mr. Berge, thank you. Ms. Alderman, if you'd like another 30 seconds, I'd be happy to give it to you. I'm not going to start it till you get started, all right?
You can consider it a birthday present.
I've got, I've got this.
Tomorrow's my birthday, so it's birthday present.
There we go.
I did remember, there, there, the county is talking about having a parcel tax due, and the two percent limit of Cattati is beginning to be really, the two percent max, and Cattati's role of keeping the county from being able to do a, any larger tax is becoming a big issue. And there, you're using, the other thing, so, sorry, the other thing is, this is all about revenue, you're not talking about expenses. Damian's making $70 an hour, they're making $50 to $60 an hour, we need to talk about expenses, not just revenue. Thank you.
And thank you. All right. Bring this back, see if the council has any comments. Nobody's, I, I think Councilmember Harvey wants to go.
Well, I, I think I agree with what Laurie's saying, I mean, we've been saying this all along, and, and that's part of, the devil's in the detail, yes, when you look at a graph that says sales tax is a large portion, it is. And, and that's what we've been trying to change, it is risky. And then Damian has said that over and over and over again. We cannot, as a city, rely 100 percent on sales tax, it doesn't work. So it's sort of, you know, how do we, moving forward, change that mix in that wheel, so that we are more like some of the other areas, maybe we could possibly get that, you know, more in the range of, you know, 50 percent, or, you know, something a little bit more reasonable. But, but I think the point that Damian was trying to make with this is, other cities use other methods to kind of make that, that pie look a little bit differently. We only have used a few of them. I think the one that, you know, caught me by surprise when Ms. Alderman brought this up a long time ago with Cloverdale, is that ad valorem that they get is huge, it's over a million dollars a year that they get into their general fund to cover that, you know, so you kind of have to, some of these numbers are not small, they're big. So, it, it is, it's a tough, tough nut, nut to, to crack, and I think that the point is, is that we're trying to balance that as best we can, so that we're not relying on one revenue source. And thank you for the presentation.
Anybody else have any comments?
No, thank you.
Well, I have a couple, I, I found that actually, I, I think I'm getting into your worldview a little bit, I actually found that very interesting. You know, it's, it's fascinating that post-Prop 13, you've got this, developed this really complex system, that's just all patched up, it's not steady-state whatsoever, and I do agree that there was a comment about there's some natural back and forth in any healthy system, and I think that's true, but I don't think that's what we see here. I think we see some huge thing that's kind of patched up to meet whatever the latest problem is, and it just oscillates back and forth, and, and kind of out of control, really, lurching from extreme to extreme, so. Ultimately, I don't think we solve that in a sitting here at this particular city council meeting, but I think it's interesting just to take a look at it and get a sense, because we often are called upon to try and compare apples and oranges, and try and find what an appropriate middle of the road is. I take a look at where Santa Rosa, and Healdsburg must be particularly with the utility users' tax and TOT. And do have some enviousness, I must admit, but on the other hand, I am very pleased to see that we compare rather favorably, which is something I think we all want to see, too. So thank you for that, that was a very helpful and illuminating report, very good. And with that, we're to Item C, and this is something for the mayors and council members' meeting agenda for 2018. And Mr. Obit, did you want to present this, or did you want me to just basically share what was, what went on there?
Well, you probably have more direct knowledge of it, so if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, I'd be happy to. So basically what happened at our last mayors and council members' meeting, at the executive meeting, there was a request for all the cities to get together, put their heads together, and get a couple of topics, two or three topics, something like that, not a lot, to use as discussion items. to use as discussion items, presentation items for our meetings, what sort of presentations we want to see. Now, obviously, there was a pretty strong interest in seeing something probably relating to fires, fire safety, recovery, as a result of what's going on, using, having the ability of having us all in the same room at one place for education is pretty powerful. So I asked Damian to put it on the agenda so we could just kick that around a little bit and see if anybody had any ideas they wanted to share. So I'll let you think about that for just a second, see if you have any questions before I open it up to public comment.
Did you want our thoughts now, or?
Well, I'm going to open it to public comment first, then I'll bring it back and we can discuss it and we'll collect thoughts.
Okay.
No questions? All right, I'm going to open this to public comment. Anything from the audience on this one? Mr. Berge.
Very briefly, let me say that if you are going to get together with some other cities and have some topics of discussion, one, I think, would be a good one to consider, is how local government can work closely with your fire districts. Because Rancho Adobe board member, great character, has been here a couple of times, begging this city council to open up communications with some issues that are still on the table between both the city of Cattati and Rancho Adobe. To date, he has no response from the city. So I think it's quite obvious, this is a textbook example of something that is needed. The coordination between city, local governments and first responders and these overlapping jurisdictions and districts. The other thing is this issue about the homeless. Now, Mr. DeLoso was kind enough tonight to put that idea on the table tonight. And I want to remind Mr. DeLoso that you don't need generally a consensus.
Mr. Berge, we're talking fire-related subjects. It has to relate to.
Fire? Fire only?
Yes, fire, basically, being the firestorms we had last year, kind of, they wanted to relate to that.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's, that's my apologies. I should have made it more clear. But if you could restrict your comments to that, that would be fine.
That's right. I'm done with that, with that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, bringing it back to the council then. So there's a few general things that staff have put down. I remember we discussed potentially having a series of presentations. My thought was perhaps some best practices for municipal disaster plans. Every city has one. Some are more out of date than others. This is a perfect time to sit down and see what the current best practice in the 21st century is. And we can see individually, then take that home and see how we compare. That's possibly something. But if anybody has any suggestions, feel free to suggest them. If not, we'll just put what we have here down and send that forward. We'll probably pick a couple, I think, since we don't want to send five. Councilmember Harvey.
You know, I do really think that we do need to work more as a county on emergency preparedness. I think, you know, everyone has, has seen what's come out, you know, from the reports that were done. And, you know, unfortunately, we were a little short in both communication and what was done and how it was done. And, you know, there's some question about, you know, mutual aid and how that's handled. And, you know, I just think generally as a county, I think we can do a better job at being prepared for when the next disaster happens, because it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So I think that there's a lot of lessons learned that happened. But I think that we should, you know, start working on those, you know, those protocols for how we as a county are going to work together, all cities involved in the, you know, and the county for that.
You would be thinking emergency preparedness, and I would assume that would encompass the county, the municipalities, the special districts as well.
Yes, yes, all, because we all have to work together, you know, when a disaster happens. You know, both the individual cities have to be, you know, involved, as well as the special districts. And the communication links have to be there. And, you know, what that looks like, is it a phone, you know, someone will have to figure that out. But I think that we should, should, we don't have a countywide preparedness.
No, I think this is a perfect time, too, to look at lessons learned and see what worked and then see what didn't, and a good time to address that. So I think that's a solid suggestion. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to suggest or anything on this list here that staff has given us that jumps out, they'd like to suggest as an additional suggestion?
I was just going to say that the, the list looks pretty extensive in reference to the fire recovery. I don't know that there needs to be more on that than the emergency response.
I mean, I guess I'd like to add, you know, items, items three and five. Not that we need to prioritize things, but I think this is, this is kind of too large of a list for, what, four more meetings this calendar year?
We need to get it down to probably a couple of suggestions. They really didn't want a lot.
Right. And, and I think this list is great. But I think, you know, item three, which is strategies for temporary housing for fire victims. I mean, I still have family that, you know, still don't have anything at this point in time. So it's pretty unfortunate. And I think impacts to businesses, too. The, the one between those, which is, you know, the tourism economy.
Yeah.
I guess I'd be more concerned if the businesses are up and running and in good shape. Tourism economy will sort of fix it and right itself, so.
There's a natural order there.
Yeah, I would think so. But I think if the priority was put more on the businesses, you know, and there, there's a lot of work going on. I know the county and Santa Rosa are waiving a lot of their typical planning processes and speeding things along, and I think that's huge. But I think, I, I would really like to see some kind of, I don't know, it's four months plus, but some kind of documentation that other jurisdictions, other counties, I mean, look at right after this fire up here, we had the ones in Southern California. You know, are those lessons learned applicable? And are the things that they're putting forward right now something that other jurisdictions could use? So I'm not saying that, you know, that's a, that's an, that's an outcome more than anything else. But I think the topics that are listed as number three and five, I think, would be really very timely.
I'm going to look over and see. Councilmember Gillen, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I actually was going to say three and five as well were good choices. And I also like the idea of just looking at overall county preparedness. And I think part of that's going to be discussed at the mayors and council members' meeting on Thursday in Napa. I think that was one of their discussion topics.
Well, I think we'll be hearing a lot about this issue. But I think we have a consensus and a good direction to go. So we have Councilmember Harvey's suggestion of emergency preparedness encompassing the county, municipalities and special districts, general emergency preparedness, lessons learned, how to improve, as well as number three, strategies for temporary housing of fire victims. Because obviously, that goes into the reconstruction effort, and we're going to be hearing a lot about that. That one's going to be there for sure. And five, impact to overall business activity and efforts to relieve any impacts. So if we could transmit a letter to, a letter to the council members' general membership board with that, with those, that would be helpful. We'll have done what they asked us to do.
Yeah, just one quick clarification on number five. So the impact to overall business activity and efforts to relieve any impacts, was that, did I understand it right, that you're thinking kind of all encompassing? So not only like, you'd mentioned the example of, of waiving of processes to move development, redevelopment through faster, but also operating businesses that aren't building anything, but is, do you mean both or just?
Well, yeah, and, and as you know, when we go to those meetings, it's a 15-minute presentation. You don't have a lot of time. So could you possibly take those two topics, put them into 15 minutes? I don't know. But whatever seems most relevant from the October fires, I think, would be appropriate.
I think there's a wide range, and I think as, as the host city starts working and trying to find what they can find, they'll be able to see what presentations might have the most bang for the buck for our county, perhaps. And it would encompass your ideas that way, then. Would that work, city manager?
Got it, yeah.
Beautiful, thank you. All right, thank you for that. So with that, we are to item D. And this is an update, changes at Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, or REMIF.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. So this was, again, this was a council request to have a presentation on some, some pretty big changes at REMIF that have happened recently. And because I'm kind of a history geek, I'll just give you a little bit. It's in the staff report, but I'll just touch on the high points. So REMIF was, was established in 1976, primarily driven by the lack of privately, of private insurance in the market for municipalities. And it was primarily driven by public safety risk, so fire and police, that private insurers don't want to insure, because I guess they have, you have to pay out a lot. And they're not in the business of paying out a lot. So, so a lot of the, a lot of the cities in California started looking at self-insurance as a solution to that, lack of coverage in the private markets. And REMIF was, REMIF was born. And it eventually grew to 15 cities, the newest member being Eureka. They joined in 1993. And today, REMIF provides several core insurance programs to its member cities. Of course, Cattati being one of them, which is why we're talking about that tonight. And they include general and auto liability insurance, workers' compensation insurance, and most recently, a self-funded group health care plan, which, down here on the south end of the REMIF territory, and I kind of, I neglected to talk about this, but REMIF is the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. And it goes from a southern extent, essentially, Cattati, Sonoma, town of Sonoma, all the way up to Eureka, Arcata. So, and it goes over to Lake County. So it's, so it's basically a lot of the north coast, a lot of those cities are covered by REMIF. And in addition to those three core programs, REMIF does offer various pooled services, such as trainings for member cities, primarily around human resources and safety training. And it's, again, that's all about, you know, risk, risk mitigation, right? So having, having consistent and adequate safety programs and the sort of things, reduce risk overall for all the members of the pool. Because if you have, you know, if you have an outlier that's not taking care of, like employee safety training, for example, it could, like any insurance program, it could subject the entire pool to more risk. And so anyway, they, there's, there's effort. And, and actually, a more concerted effort to try to get all the members of that pool in all, in various other ways, onto sort of the same benchmark so that it levelizes the risk across all the members. So that we're all using common practices and methods to do various things that we do in municipal operations. And so again, like, like many insurance programs, how, how REMIF works fundamentally is there's a deductible amount, right? Which is, if something, if there's a claim, there's a certain amount that the city pays. And then above that amount, there's what the pool pays, REMIF. So it's like a layering of insurance. And this is common in all different types of insurance coverages. So you have REMIF, and then above that, you have another joint powers authority that's broader to Northern California called CJPRMA, which is a pool of a lot of different JPAs and also individual cities. And then above that, you have private insurance. So there's a lot of different layers of insurance coverage to, to minimize the risks to any one insurer and spread costs, which is a very common strategy in insurance. So now getting, after that long intro, getting to the point of this item. Recently, at, at the board meeting, we had Councilmember Moore, who had to partake in several kind of big issues that came before the board. One of them was the, the general liability program, and the other was the workers' compensation program. So on the general liability program, it used to be largely handled by REMIF staff. And the, the handling of that was, was inconsistent. And so recently, REMIF hired a new general manager. The old one had retired. They got a new general manager. And then they, and they ended up using what's called a third-party administrator in the interim, in the interim period of time, while this new person got up to speed to manage the general liability program. And the short version is the board decided to continue that relationship with a third-party administrator to, to manage all the claims and help out with the administration of it. And the net result of that should be that the, that, that there's much better visibility in reporting on claims and hopefully, overall, more consistent administration of that. And then also, the other main program was workers' compensation. And REMIF had in-house workers' compensation, in-house workers' compensation program. And both, and I should say both, in the liability program for the pool and for the workers' comp program, it started experiencing operating deficits, which was another sort of catalyst to these discussions that happened at the board meeting in January. And the end result was that the board decided to shift the workers' compensation program from an internally administered program to one that's administered by a third-party administrator. And as part of that decision, the board also, REMIF also administered the workers' compensation programs for other cities that were outside of the REMIF pool. The two cities that were currently in it were the city of Petaluma and the city of San Rafael. And when they did an actuarial analysis or an accounting analysis of the, of the costs in the workers' compensation program, they discovered that, that the pool, REMIF pool, was subsidizing Petaluma and San Rafael's workers' compensation programs. So that, so in addition to shifting the workers' compensation program to a third-party administrator, they also basically told these two outside cities that, hey, we're shifting to a third-party administrator. And if you guys want to come along, that's fine. But you have to pay the actual cost for the third-party administrator. And, or you could get your own workers' compensation program. So that's, that's where things are right now. And in the, at least in the workers' compensation program, the near-term expectation is that there's some long-term outstanding claims in the pool. And it's expected that, that in the near term, that in those rates, those workers' compensation rates will increase as those claims get settled out and they try to clean out the older claims in the system. So when we get around to budget time and we're talking about insurance costs, the expectation right now is that those costs will probably be higher than they were last year, which were already higher than the prior year. Because REMIF, as a board, was assessing surcharges on their programs to try to deal with the operating deficit issue. So anyway, it's, after, after all that, I'm sure Councilmember Moore, who was actually, who actually voted at the meeting, might have some input. But that's sort of it in a nutshell, kind of a big nutshell, but that's it in a nutshell.
I'm going to bring it back for questions and see if Councilmember Moore has any comments he'd like to add to the presentation first.
No, I, I think that was pretty concise. I would elaborate a little bit more on the, the, the programs in the liability and the workers' comp should have been seeing gradual increases as the claims were maturing in the program. And the information from the previous general manager was less than forthcoming, would be a good way to put that. And so upon his retirement, we kind of did a forensics audit and discovered some of these inefficiencies and some of the things that were being done. And which led to some of these significant changes on the board. A couple of years back, we had a partially self-funded health plan through REMIF. And we had suggested to the board at that point, we might look at a fully funded. And since we've done that and modernized that, the health insurance pool has done really well. I think it's sitting on a $3 million surplus, which we could use in the event that we have some catastrophic claims. But if we, if we address that, the other deficits, deficiencies with the same processes, we should be much better off in our liability and our workers' comp programs. And then get, as Damian said, we get rid of some of the older workers' comp claims. But unfortunately, in order to get rid of some of those older ones, you have to throw some money at them. And so some of the cities may not be in that position, and some of the cities may. So it's, it's been quite the process. And it will be interesting what the assessments are coming up in the next month or so when the final numbers are out. But in the meantime, with the contracting out of the workers' comp to a third-party administrator, there is going to be a loss of seven jobs, something like that. And so REMIF will not have as high administration costs. And so REMIF will not have as high administration costs. That's one caveat to that, that could be positive. And we'll see.
Very good. I'm going to see if anybody has any questions for staff. No, I'm going to open this to the public if anybody wants to comment. Sing none, I'll bring this back.
Nobody likes insurance, right?
It's that fascinating. Well, actually, it sounds to me like, in the long term, better service and less risk, but more upfront costs for now to get there. Yeah, yeah, so. And a little, I do have one question for you guys both. As I read this, my notes were, when I saw Petaluma and Santa Fel under separate contact, and Petaluma not being a member of REMIF, first of all, I wanted to know are revenues more than sufficient enough to take care of providing them this service? It appears that historically, it wasn't at least. Why isn't Petaluma a member of REMIF? Any idea?
I don't know.
I mean, it's logical, they obviously are bigger than some of the other cities in this county, but clearly, they're not big enough to handle that all themselves, and you'd think it would be beneficial for them and for us to share, pool these costs.
Well, I think, I will add, as I recall, they are a member of CJPRMA.
Okay.
That's the other JPA, but it's more...
So they were kind of cherry picking a little bit. Well, I'm glad, I'm going to thank council member Moore and city manager for their expertise and a more hands-on approach to this than perhaps historically was done in years past. I think we'll see some benefit from that, so that's good.
And good luck with getting those old workers' comp claims settled, because they go on for decades.
Yes, indeed. And speaking of the city manager, we are to item 12, which is the city manager's report.
Yes. Just when you're getting tired of me talking, I get to talk again. So, thank you, mayor, members of the council. I have just a couple of things. One is that the city issued a request for proposals on May 21st for commercial cannabis licenses. And basically, to make a long story short, applications are due March 26th. At that point, a staff committee will review and rank the applications, and then bring recommendations forward to council to consider the various applications that we receive. And if, we expect this to be in the early May timeframe, when it would come to council. And if not all available license are issued from these applications, a second RFP will be reissued later in the summer. So it'll be an ongoing process until all the licenses at some point are issued. And interested parties should act quickly in order to make the March deadline, it was a 30-day deadline for the first RFP. And they can contact Vicki Parker at Community Development, 665-3637, or via email at vparker@catatiscity.org. And then, so in addition to this, we've also, I mean, we've had an established cannabis information page on our city website, but the latest informations have been the adopted ordinance and a brochure, it's a beautiful brochure, a large, beautiful brochure that I do not have with me right now, but it's on, it's on, it will shortly be on the website. And it's intended to help residents understand what's now legal in the city with related to cannabis, as well as some basic facts about what the council passed for business, for cannabis businesses in the city as well. And as well as, in addition to the website, they're also available at public counters, and links will be sent to residents, have been sent to residents in the newsletter, which will be coming out in early March, and posted on our Facebook page as well. And also, wayfinding, our wayfinding program has gotten off to a rapid start following appointment of the final steering committee members. So after the council appointed its members, planning commission and design review did the same. And a kickoff meeting with the consultant has been scheduled for next Tuesday, March 6th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. And this meeting is open to the public, and we definitely encourage the public's participation in that meeting. For more information, contact John Paul Harries in the Community Development Department, his number is 665-3634. And some recreation news, beginning on March 10th for three consecutive Saturdays, we'll be hosting public workshops to discuss our parks master plan. Each one starts at 1:00 PM here at the council chamber. And this also is, it's posted Facebook and on our website, and it's also in the newsletter that is going out for early March, the first week of March. And this is a great opportunity for people to learn, well, to express what they want to see happen in our parks in terms of infrastructure and improvements. And each Saturday, we'll focus on a different set of parks, but if someone from the public's not able to make the date for the park they're interested in, they're welcome to come to any of the three meetings and provide their feedback then. So come all for that. And then on Friday, March 23rd, we host our next Parents Night Out from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. This is where parents can leave the children at the community center while they enjoy a night out relaxing, or at home, or whatever they want to do. And we'll provide children with pizza dinner, games, crafts, and fun while the parents are out. And on March 25th, this is Sunday, we'll be hosting our first bunny brunch and egg hunt in the Cattati Room at 10:00 AM. The event will include a delicious brunch, crafts, photo ops with the bunny, which I'm assured will not be a scary bunny, it'll be a nice bunny. And finish off with an egg hunt in Keter Field. So registration's required, as is expected, this will be a sellout like our Breakfast with Santa events. For more information, you can always contact Ashley at 665-4222, or A. Wilson at catatiscity.org. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Do we have any questions about anything, including bunny suits?
Been there, done that.
I think that's a good caveat, let's make sure. I've seen some pretty scary-looking bunny suits in movies over the last few years, so if we could avoid that, I think it'll make it much more successful for all of us.
Now, I haven't talked to Ashley about this, but we may be looking for a volunteer to wear the bunny suit if anyone would like.
I think the vice mayor may be available and would be delighted to help.
Well, hopefully, it won't be too warm, because those suits are very hot.
Yes, indeed. All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. And now, we're to city council member reports, and I'll start over here on my right and see if we have anybody that has a report for this meeting.
No, not this meeting, thank you.
No? No? Then I'm going this direction.
So I attended the Waste Management Agency meeting, and they, we discussed the evaluation points for the proposals received for composting. Originally, they turned in 12 proposals. One of the proposals, for some reason, has dropped out, so they're down to 11. So they will be spending the next month or so going through and evaluating those. It was a good cross-section of people that are on the evaluation committee, so that's good. And the other item was the 1819 work plan. And then I attended for the mayor, the Russian River Watershed Association meeting, and that was interesting, there was a presenter that talked about all the different chemicals that there are found within the Russian River, with lots of very long chemically names that are pretty scary, some of the names. It was really helpful, the gentleman kind of said, okay, here's the name, but here's, you know, what you commonly know it as. So there's like over 2,000 different chemicals that they check for, it's pretty amazing.
A quick question about that, and I want to thank you for being able to get that and cover that. I did want to hear about that one. What was the general update? Because there's been some years of back and forth, essentially two sides, if I was to symbolize, one side saying they're very concerned that all the variety of chemicals we eat and ingest and go in the wastewater, that we have no way of tracking, they could be problematic in all these different combinations, and even in small doses. And another side saying, well, nah, the way we treat water, it'll be just fine. And these are oversimplifications, but I was curious how this, was there a general sense of casting to either side at this point?
He didn't really get into that level of detail about, you know, the treated or not treated. What was very interesting in the comments that he made was, there is a lot of folks that talk about agriculture, putting stuff in, and the interesting thing was where they find the most concentration of stuff is really where things, the urban areas start. So it's, you know, clear, 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 and there's an urban area, and then you can get into, you know, what the different chemicals are and, you know, kind of how.
So in areas, even where they're using this agriculturally, they're not picking it up so much interest?
Right, exactly, yes. So some of the obvious ones, you know, aren't being detected in the areas that are more rural, which was interesting. You know, it gets into, you know, some of the other things that I know that the Watershed Association and others are trying to do, you know, things like medicines that are in there, you know, because they don't really know, long-term, what those medicines are really doing to the fish and other animals, you know, how it's changing that stuff. So the more work that we can do on those kind of things to kind of pull those, and it's sort of like an onion, you kind of have to peel back, okay, well, what are the things that are causing this? You know, where are the sources and what can we, what can we do? As a matter of fact, I have a sheet for Damian, there's some, you know, pesticides that they want municipalities to kind of take a look at, you know, not using, to control things, to kind of keep that stuff out. So that was real interesting.
Sounds like it could be a future agenda item, you have there.
Yeah, yeah, and they also went through their 2018-19 work plan. And I know you were a little interested in the safe medicine, but that one's not really discussed. I guess the board is going to discuss it, and it got kind of put off. Again, all this fire stuff is kind of taking up board of supervisors' kind of time and stuff. And that's it for me.
Super, thank you, good report. Vice Mayor Deloso.
Thank you, mayor. One thing on those rural lands, they probably act more as a filter for things, you know, as opposed to the municipalities where it's just a straight runoff.
Right, that's probably true, yeah.
There's a big difference there. Okay, just going to rattle through a few of these. The day after our last council meeting, we had an executive committee for Ag and Open Space, and I was re-elected as chair, I think only because nobody else raised their hand, and that was fine. So I'm happy to do another year, it'll be great. And moving along, then we had our Ag and Open Space meeting the following week on the 22nd. The bigger topics still are the Vital Lands Initiative, which is something that we're going to, at our next meeting next month on the 22nd of March, we're going to have it a joint meeting with the Fiscal Oversight Committee for Ag and Open Space. And then, May 22nd, Tuesday, we're going to bring it to the Board of Supervisors, hopefully for approval at that point in time. So, but this is kind of a visioning document, so it'll be really good to finally get buy-in, hopefully, from the board. And then, of course, the matching grant program is on until the end of April, I believe, is the filing deadlines for that. And turn your page, I shall. Can you guys actually hear me talk to myself? That's not inside my head, that's exterior? I was afraid of that. Friday will be the Health Action Council meeting, they're quarterly meetings from 8:00 to 10:00 up in Santa Rosa, so it'll be the first one of this year. And that is all I have.
Beautiful. Well, I'm going to congratulate you, I'm sure you were elected chair two years in a row, which is a pretty remarkable accomplishment, due to a lot more than just nobody else raising their hands, so congratulations. I think it's remarkable to look around now, you have a lot of folks in council involved in a lot of ways and working on a lot of things in the community, and I think we're doing more of that perhaps than was done in years past, and I think we're all the better for it in this community, so congratulations to you, well done. Three quick things here, let's see. First of all, Legislative Committee kicked off, the year is underway, nothing specific to report yet, but I will tell you, it looks like to me, the focus from the state is going, this year is going to be increasing housing, any way they possibly can. Interesting enough, that will probably match a lot of the discussion in this county as well. And what you'll see from the state will increase housing, but it will usually be the cost of local control, and will have various caveats to it. So more to be seen in that, certainly. I want to mention, as new mayor, it was my intention to go over and visit Rancho Doby Fire, actually, at my first, their first meeting this year, but we were up in Sacramento, I wasn't able to do that. So I did go over, just to visit, say hello, and I did suggest, as mayor, having some small input to the agenda for the year, that if Rancho Doby does decide to go for a ballot measure, pursue a ballot measure this year, that I would be open to agendizing a presentation from them on that issue at the council for us to listen, potentially support if it was, as it has been in the past, something we felt was valid and helpful to the community. I suggested that the chair and the vice chair, perhaps the chief, would be certainly welcome to come and present that, in the logical time, might be around the commencement of the campaign, or right in that area, just before, just after, I would think. And so I offered as a next step, I gave my cards to everyone, again, as I did a few years ago, and suggested if anybody wants to meet personally for coffee, to talk about any issues, or just to get to know each other, because I always think that's valuable. I'm open to that, and I suggested to Chair Groby that the next step, probably for us to get together and have a coffee and kick around any ideas she has for bringing a presentation to us. So I thought I'd share that with you. And lastly, just the other day, we had our State of the City, I believe that was last Thursday. We had a comfortably full room, and I got to present a PowerPoint presentation, basically covered where we were five years ago, and where we are now, and what we've done to get here. And we thought it was pretty well-received, and we think it was an interesting presentation, so I think that was all well and good, and I'm just very happy to reflect back, if you look at where we were five years ago, and where we're at now, it's a pretty remarkable progression. So a lot of thanks to everyone here, but mostly, a lot of thanks to the community that's actually supported this city so strongly. That's why you're seeing this resurgence out there everywhere, it's because of the support we've had over the years from the community. So thanks to all of them for that. So that is it for council member reports, and we are to item 14, which is public comment on non-action agenda items. And I think we have some other people want to speak too, and this might be a good time for you to speak, if that's what you're here for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Charles Michael O'Neil, I'm the second vice district governor for District 4C2 Lyons. And I just wanted to remind you of a very important date, April the 7th. I know one member will not be able to make it, I got a very nice email from him, but I've been getting confusing email returns. It's a Saturday, April the 7th at 1:00. We're having our Region Student Speaker Contest, I'm looking forward to seeing you all there. So hopefully, we'll see you there, if I can get a, definitely a year or a year on email, I'm sure we appreciate it.
Well, if we get the date screwed up, you'll have a chance of having people there, both Saturday and Sunday, so either way.
No, I won't be there.
We'll have you covered, one way or the other.
Oh, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you all, appreciate it.
Anybody else like to speak on non-action agenda items? Ms. Alderman, please.
I would like to urge, this is related to this marijuana stuff. I went yesterday to hang, I hung out with a bunch of attorneys, we had the Sonoma County Bar Association on new laws effective in 2018, and there was some smaller laws on marijuana taking effect, and it had to do with the federal versus state things, and there were certain things like, you can be fined, certain people can be fined for not mentioning that it's against the federal law, even if they're following the state law. So I would urge you guys to make sure to do that, and it would be really informative if she did go and find from the Sonoma County Bar, or talk to, you know, Mr. English, the research attorney for Superior Court, that would be. I also found out the state dinosaur is called Augustmophis, and it's a very ugly dinosaur, and that the state nut, they, the legislature could not decide on one nut, so they did four nuts. So there's the almond, the pistachio, the pecan, and walnut, thank you. So very informative stuff, thank you.
That may be my favorite quote of the evening, the legislature cannot decide on one nut.
Yeah.
That really covers a lot of bases. Anybody else like to speak? Mr. Beridge, please.
Regarding future agenda items, I'd like to make a suggestion. Tonight, Mr. Deloso tried to put something on the agenda, and I'm not sure what the result of that is, but if we follow the California League of Cities' recommendation on how to put something on the agenda, they feel that any city council member should be able to put something on the agenda without other support from the council. That wasn't the case when I was on the council, but that is the league's recommendation. And at a future meeting, that person can make a short presentation, ask a guest or two to come up and support that position, and then the council can have a discussion whether they want to put that on another future agenda. whether they want to put that on, on another future agenda. I'd like to see that discussed, because there seems to be some confusion on how you put something on, on a future agenda. I'd also like to see you put on a future agenda, how to properly communicate with city staff. This is an ongoing issue, where the council, at times, will ask questions of staff that they're not prepared to answer. And tonight, Damian answered one of your questions tonight regarding whether Petaluma's part of REMIF or not, and why not, and he said, "I frankly don't know." And frankly, that's an unacceptable answer. The answer staff should be giving is that, "I don't know, but I will get back with you with an answer." And, and in doing that, he can email all of you, he can also carbon copy interested citizens who's on his email list, who may also want to like, like to know that answer, but "I don't know" is not an acceptable answer, and I think we all know that, and I think it puts city staff in a very uncomfortable position at times like, like we saw tonight. Last but not least, Councilwoman Harvey was absolutely correct in wanting to bring forward on a future agenda, emergency preparedness. Now, the last city meeting we had on emergency preparedness was about the year 2000, when that meeting was held in this room before there was carpet, Mr. DeLoso remembers that, and it was held by Police Chief Stewart, Dennis Dorch, the county emergency officer, and a member of the Ranch Adobe Fire District. And we all met here, and we had a great conversation on a Saturday about emergency preparedness. That was 18 years ago. Ever since that, it's been one of my political platform items, is to review emergency preparedness again, how we, how is the city going to react in the, in the event of a natural or man-made disaster? And it's long overdue. We really don't have a plan, we don't know who's going to be coming to work, who's not coming to work, the chain of command, who our volunteers are in this town to help the police department and help city services address this. So, Mrs. Harvey, I'm hoping that you, your recommendation to put that on a future agenda will be taken seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Berge. All right, I'm not seeing any further public comments, so we're going to bring that back, and we are too. Any information received after the agenda was posted? And seeing none, that brings us to adjournment at 8:53. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you next time. Good evening.